It is Monday, March 8th, and we're opening up the Millville Planning Board meeting. We have four members of the committee with us tonight, Chris Drew, Brian Malali, Justin Allen, and myself. We are expecting Bill Coop to join us shortly. We have just a few items on the agenda this evening. And I know we're going to be having a continuation of the public hearing from the last meeting for 226 Main Street. Everybody should have some new materials in front of them related to this. And just as we wait for Bill to potentially join us, I'll just take a few things out of order. I don't have any minutes for us to approve this evening. I do have a brief update on our search for a town planner. The folks from CMRPC have narrowed down the selection of candidates for us to four candidates, and I think it was four. One of them dropped out already because we weren't able to schedule interviews soon enough, and they got another job offer. So it's either three or four. And they're going to be setting up those interviews starting on the 15th, hoping to get them all done on the 15th. And if not, we'll get the rest of them done shortly thereafter. So I'll be able to report back to you folks at our next meeting on how those went and what the decision of the committee is. That's exciting. As I mentioned earlier, we're done with Gabe's contract again. And at this point, since we're so far along in the process of looking, seeking the planner anyway, I'm probably going to hold off till at least after those interviews to decide whether or not we want to sign on with CMRPC for another couple of weeks or something. We'll have a better idea then of what the timeframe is that we'd be looking at. Does that make sense to you folks?
Yeah, I mean, if you're comfortable with that.
Yeah, and I think we can make do and try to save a few bucks. All right. Does anybody have anything else that they want to talk about this evening? I see Bill's joined us.
Yes.
How you doing, Bill?
I'm good, thank you.
Pam, when did you, when did you want to try to get into the Town Hall and try to take a look at some of that?
Yeah.
Office clerical stuff?
Just, just to refresh everybody, we were hoping to get in to clean up the files before we brought in our new planner. And since we're, we're closing in on that, we're just looking to schedule that out again. Justin and I are willing to go sort through those. Brian, if you still don't mind helping us to get into the building?
I can do that. That being said, I'm going to be out of, potentially going to be out of town the end of this week and through the weekend and early part of next week. But other than that, absolutely.
Okay, awesome. Justin, I know I have limited availability this week, so maybe if we look.
Oh, me, me, me too, me too. Next week is definitely, you know, a target, yeah, a better target.
All right. Perhaps Wednesday or Thursday evening of the following week? Maybe Wednesday would be better.
Wednesday, the?
Seventeenth.
St. Patty's Day.
Bring some green beer with us.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, that works.
I won't, I won't be back until Thursday.
Oh, you won't be back till the 18th? Okay. I can't.
But I'm sure you could, you know, reach out to somebody else.
Yeah, maybe we can find somebody else then. Justin, what time are you, are you thinking?
I mean, I can do, I can do anything. So if it's on that Wednesday.
You can do anything?
Yeah. So if you want to do like, kind of like before dinner, five o'clock type thing, or if you want to do like six to seven, or even seven to eight, you know, I'm flexible.
Okay, I can connect with you on it. I'm thinking earlier might be better.
Okay.
And then I'll see if I can find someone else who can let us in.
Okay, sounds good.
All right, perfect. So we'll get that done. Is anybody?
I just, I just want to get more familiar with the way that the, the things are organized. And I might imagine that a new planner might come in and say, you know, hey, this is, this is actually how I would like to do it. Because, you know, it works because of X, Y, and Z.
Agreed. I just feel like we couldn't even tell them where anything was unless we looked at it. So that's my goal, is whether or not we can come up with the perfect systems, probably not going to happen that day. But if we can have an understanding of what's in that cabinet, where things are, how to find it, we can help that person get settled.
Exactly.
Yep. All right, fantastic. If there's nothing else, I'll hear a motion to open, to reopen the public hearing for 226 Main Street.
Make a motion to open the meeting for 226 Main Street.
All in favor?
Hi.
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 All right, who do we have with us this evening?
Jude Govan with the Andrews Engineering, along with John Scunzio, the applicant.
How you doing, Jude and John?
Doing all right. Just another crazy Monday.
Awesome.
So. Anne Marie Rassico.
How you doing, Anne Marie?
Good, thank you.
So last we left off, there was a question about the fire department and the fire access to the site. We made some changes and modifications based on their comments. What you see right now is an exhibit plan. What we did was the dumpster pad was next to the office. Can everyone see my screen?
Yep, yes.
Okay, so the dumpster pad was next to the office, and this was just a fence with no access. What we did was we moved the dumpster pad to a different location further into the site. And we provided a fire access gate along the building so that the fire truck can come straight in. This rectangle represents the fire truck, and the requirement was to get the truck 150 feet in off of the road and then be able to touch all of the buildings with, within 150 feet. So if you can see this thick dashed line, kind of semicircle coming down, back down to the road, that is the 150-foot offset from the fire truck. And this dash line from Main Street coming into the fire truck is the 150-foot length of fire truck. So we're proving that we meet both the off-the-street requirement and the requirement to have all the buildings within 150 feet of the fire apparatus. The other change that we made was we were made aware that the septic system location on the Butters' property was not properly shown. We have looked back into our records, and we've added the septic tank and the two trenches for the septic system itself. And other than that, there aren't any changes that were requested or suggested. And so these are the revisions I sent, albeit later on. This afternoon, we're having trouble with our scanner, but I sent over official stamped copies of this plan set from 5:30 PM. So the board is in receipt of the revised plan set, and those are the two changes that were requested.
Has the fire, have we reviewed this yet, or is it?
We sent it over, um, we sent it over around two weeks ago, and we've sent several emails, and they haven't made any comment, any further comments.
Okay.
Did the location of the septic tank on map 119 parcel 35 affect your plan at all? Or was it just, we wanted to make sure that they had the correct?
The, the Butters made the comment that it wasn't shown correctly, and we had the information, so we simply just put it on our plans. We actually did that upgrade.
Okay, but it does not affect your plan at all?
Not, not, not at all.
What other questions? Does anyone have?
I do, I have one question. Not, everything you did looks really well.
Thank you.
I noticed on the, you have slope granite curb in Cape Cod berm. I'm assuming the slope granite curb is going at the curb cut, and everything else will be Cape Cod berm. And that'll be taking, taking all the water to the two main catch basins?
Correct.
Okay.
It's like you said, the, the radiuses, see this slope granite berm here?
Yep.
And here at the entrance, and then everything else is Cape Cod berm. The catch basin's in the center because we wanted to capture all the water coming off of this entrance here. And we have like a reversed crown, so instead of the water pitching out towards the edge of the curbs, it pitches in. So all that water will get funneled down to that catch basin number one. And then over here, everything rides along the curb in the front to catch basin number two, to take all the site drainage.
Great, excellent, thank you.
Anne Marie, did you have a question?
Ah, yes, please. I have a couple, but I didn't know if this was the time to do it, or if you guys have more that you're going to talk about. I had a couple of questions.
Shoot.
Okay, first, and you've just started looking at that curb cut. I want to make sure that the curb cut doesn't infringe on my property. Because years back, we were able to access the prop, the last owners of this actually asked, accessed our house from the lot three, which is what this 226 is. Somehow along the line, that's gone away. So eventually, we'll be putting in a driveway, because right now, we're, we don't have a driveway. So I want to make sure that that doesn't infringe on us being able to do that at some point. So that would be one thing to question. Um, I wondered also if this catch basin number one, it's about, it's within the 40-foot range of our personal well. I didn't know if that's a safe distance, or if that would create problems. And my third question is, is there going to be a buffer zone next to my property and his? To, what, what sort of buffer zone? I know in the back, it talks about a berm, but I didn't know if that would also be continued there and what that would consist of. So those are my three questions.
Okay, I can answer all of those. There's an existing curb cut in the, in the road now at the Main Street. And we have, I know that you have a dirt kind of driveway. It's not finalized or finished, but there's definitely plenty of room between the sidewalk that enters into the front of your house and the curb cut and the.
So you're not actually readjusting that curb cut, you're keeping it the way it is?
It's going to get taken back about 10 feet, but it's not going to, it doesn't impinge on your driveway access itself. Your driveway may meet up with where it, where it transitions in right in this area. Your driveway is most likely going to come up off of that here, but it's not going to be in your way. You're not going to have, there isn't going to be a curb impeding your, your access into your, your site.
I wanted to be sure of that, because I know we're very tight spaced for both places, so.
Absolutely. No, that's a great question. I'd want to know that, too.
So, go ahead. You have my question.
So your second question, as far as the catch basin goes, and whether it, basically what we were talking about before Mr. Malali brought it up was there's curbing that goes all the way around this entire, all the impervious site surface. And all of the, the water is meant to get captured within that curbing and then get funneled down to that catch basin. So nothing, none of the stormwater that is going to hit the site, isn't going to run off towards your septic. It's actually going to be taken away in more of a greater capacity than it does today. Because right now, it kind of goes a little bit onto your property and then comes onto ours and off the front during like a heavy rainfall event. Now, everything's pitched away from your property, and the catch basin's going to collect all that water and actually send it. If you look, it's going to send it over to the right-hand side into this underground storage compartments. They're basically big plastic chambers where the water sits and slowly goes perks down through the ground and goes out. So you won't have that, that physical runoff coming off of the property or towards your, your property.
Okay, very good.
So the third.
So there's no way that the catch basin is going to bother my well, which is really near the front?
No, if that was a leaching catch basin, it may, it has a different offset, meaning that if there wasn't a pipe, basically all that is, is a big giant chamber, and the water goes into that and then gets piped elsewhere. It gets piped over into that stormwater chamber system. If this was a leaching catch basin where the water filled up and then leached down into the ground in that area, then there would be a different required offset. But there is no offset from a catch basin to a well if it's within a closed pipe system. And then I can show you a little bit further here. The requirement for the drainage system that is right here, which we're proposing, is 100 feet from an existing well. So this line right here that comes through is your 100-foot well offset line, and your well's shown here. So we're, we're outside of the zone of the, the well offset, so we're definitely meeting that also. In a perfect world, the, actually, the closer to your property, the soils were better, so the system would have been smaller. But would ended up that we would have been within your well offset. So we had to move the system over to the right-hand side to get away from your well, so that you had a safe distance between the stormwater system and your septic system and your well.
Okay, excellent.
And then the last, the last question I believe you had is there's a space between the curbing and the fence. It averages about 10 feet, but that's all proposed to be green space. So there'll be grass all along the, the green belt or the buffer between your property line and the, the edge of pavement on our site.
So it's, it's a grass buffer? I thought the town required like evergreen trees or something like that? And.
The town doesn't require any kind of landscape buffering?
Are you sure? Because a vegetation, vegetative screen with plantings not less than three feet in width and not less than six feet in height? It's a, your, the buffer requirements as cited on the town bylaws? I'm just asking. I don't know, but that's what information I was looking at.
I did not see that, but yeah.
I believe what.
A hundred dash 505.
Okay.
I believe what you're referring to is when it falls into the line of sight and they're, they're doing plantings on, on an edge of a property, we have requirements for some of that. Going up a property line, I, I believe the only requirement would be come into building, a building offset, which you obviously are meeting all of those also.
So you're saying there won't be a buffer zone really, that like as it, as in the requirements seem to state? So it'd just be the open space it is right now, and the gating and maybe grass? That's all you're saying is what's going to be there?
That's what's currently proposed, yes.
So you have the, you're going to have the fence, then the green space, then the pavement, then the buildings, correct?
Yes.
So he's putting in a fence. Do we know what kind of fence he's putting in?
A chain link fence.
Chain link fence?
Yes.
Okay. And how close to the road would that fence go? I mean, I know it's chain length, but I want to make sure we have ability to get in and out of our area, because I don't want it to be blocked. So. No, it's going to be good?
It, it's back here. See, see where my hand is here?
That's as far as the fence is going to go?
It goes right to there, and then it cuts over to the building, and then it comes back out of the building and comes across the front.
So there'll be nothing for the first? Yeah, that a whole area, there's nothing there to block off my property from his?
Correct. There's no, also not any building or anything in that, in that line of sight either.
So there's not even fence at that point?
No.
I would really prefer a buffer zone of some sort, plantings or something. Just the thought, just saying.
Well, we can't be too close to the road with a buffer zone with trees, because then you have line of sight coming up 122 being major highway would be affected, which wouldn't be good for you backing out onto 122.
I agree. I understand that, but I also know that it just want a little, little bit of a protection, a little bit of privacy. I understand I can't get everything I want, but I'm pretty sure the bylaws would favor me for doing this, for asking for this.
Is that, is that the planning board bylaws?
I, it's the bylaws for the town, right on the thing. I clicked bylaws and looked for buffer, and this is what I came up with.
Anybody on the board any aware of that, or have any knowledge of it?
Well, this is, this is where the public forum comes in, into play, and that they can ask. Are you looking for privacy in your, your backyard? Obviously, you don't want to, you, you don't want to or can't block the line of sight in the front. Are you, you talking about like your backyard?
They could go to, well, I mean, my well, if even it went to that point, that still gives like five feet before you get to the thing, plus the sidewalk.
Well, the, your well is, Jude, correct me if I'm wrong, it's approximately 10 feet off of that road there?
Dude? Um, I'm looking. I'm sorry, I don't know if you could hear me. This is like an Ouija, a Ouija board to me, you know? Jude, are you there? Can you hear me?
I'm here, John.
Uh, it's about, yeah, it's about eight to 10 feet.
All right, so what we could do, Anne Marie, is from the well, so that we don't affect the line of sight on traffic or approximately a little past the well, because you're not going to have a turnaround driveway. You're just going to back in, I mean, back out onto 122, correct?
What we've been doing is because we have enough room, believe it or not, in our area, and we're pretty good at driving around the other cars. We've been turning it around and backing back into it. So we've been facing out for the most part.
So you've been back, you, you have a spot where you could turn around and you're yelling for the driveway, is what you're saying?
At this moment, there's no driveway, but we drive in near the well, turn around in the yard, and face back out.
Okay.
One car parking close to the house, and the next one parking next to it there.
What we could do is pass that well, and again, Brian could help me out with this. I don't know how close we can be to the 122 for that sight line. We could put some abreviations from that point to the fence point.
Okay, that would be helpful. Thank you. But the fence can't go any further, is what you're saying. You wouldn't want to do that. That's okay. Because your fence, you're actually saying that the front part of your building will not be, front part of your property pretty much straight across will not have fencing, is what you're looking at.
Not in this area, because the tra- traffic has to come in. If somebody doesn't have, you have to have room. We don't want traffic onto the street. So if somebody was coming in, they would come into this, to the point where you see that pipe coming in to that second culvert, I believe it is, and that's where the fence would, where they'd have a key pass, so that they're off of the road. And then they would have a key pass to get into the property.
Okay. So you're actually not using that second exit entrance way closer to the cemetery at all? You're getting rid of that?
That is going to stay. We're not, it's not going to be used, because the fence go from the point of the beginning of the, right where Jude's hand is.
Okay.
Over that way. So the only access in, in the front would be to that existing curb cut.
Okay.
So this will, this, this whole area will be grass?
Okay.
So I was able to just go on to the town bylaws and look. I took a screenshot of, I think it's section 100 dash 505, the buffer requirements. Can, can we just discuss whether that, these are applicable here? Because, you know, in reading, I'm talking about, it defines the purpose. It, it appears to be applicable, and then, you know, give suggestions on, on what should be done, so.
I stopped sharing my screen, Justin. Maybe you could share yours, the screenshot?
Oh, it's in the chat, so I don't know if cable access.
I have it up, too. I can screen share.
So I mean, if, if you read it, the purpose of this section is to assist in reducing the incompatibility between a budding land uses. And, and here we have a residential use, and then we have, you know, a special permit use. So it, it seems to me like this would apply here.
I agree with Justin. I, and can everyone read my screen, or do I need to make this bigger to see it?
I can see it.
So what we could do, again, Brian, you have a, is there a requirement from how far from the road?
No, it's going to be the line of sight.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's 20 feet off the edge of pavement to the center of the vehicle. So whatever that line of sight, whatever that line, that triangle forms. So we could, we could certainly maybe 10 feet past where their existing well is. We could definitely provide the screening from there, you know, along the side property line.
Right, we'll put our line of abreviations in there.
Yeah, yeah.
That would be fine. I have no problem with that.
I have one more question.
I mean, hold on, Anne, Anne Marie, hold on. Is, is that, is that amicable to you?
I think it will be. I have one more request. There's some adult tree that would be, that are right on the borderline. Can we leave those, so that we're not, it's basically, they're right where my property stake is. There's like one very nice maple. Would that be possible to leave, so that there's shade and it provides, it's further back? It's further back where you've already planning on doing things. Yeah, basically, pretty much right in front of where my existing shed is, but over right on the line, there's a nice older tree that, it provides a lot of shade.
And if it, if it's on the line, then I don't have a problem with that. If you see this, this squiggly dark line here, that's the proposed tree line here. So we were planning on leaving vegetation all the way up until this point right here where the existing tree line is. That's where we would start our cutting, and we were going to cut along where the fence is going to be. So it seems like without actually putting a survey point on the physical ground, if you're saying that it's in front of your shed and it's along that property line, because I know it is staked out, so it's pretty.
It's a stake all of two feet from it.
Yeah.
Right on, like, even with it.
So is it in this area where my cursor is?
Yeah, pretty much in there. If you want, some ribbon or something and throw it out there before you guys do construction, just ask you to hold that one.
I don't think that's going to be in our way, and I think we planned on keeping that, that vegetation anyway, so.
Because that's a good, what is that, 10, 15 feet? From that point to the property line?
Yeah, it's, it's directly on the property line, and it can.
If it was directly on the prop, if it's directly on the property line, it would be staying.
Okay, perfect, perfect. That's all we can hope for. Perfect. The fence, this tree, everything. Okay.
Any more? You got any more?
Not at this moment.
Okay, I, I saw you trying to remember them all. I didn't want you to forget one.
Oh, there's, there's, there's a whole list of things that, that we've been researching, and those are the ones that we decided that if we're going to get our, our dithers in, that we try that and see if we can get that much. I mean, it's going to be an interesting adjustment for us anyway with what's going in. So, but, you know, doing our best, we just need our, our land protected and our privacy protected. And it looks like we're working together on that, and I appreciate that.
No problem.
Thank you. Thank you.
Alright, any other questions?
Does this go to another board that has to approve it or is this the last of the discussion on it?
Um, there, I, as far as I'm concerned, that we just needed to have site plan approval with the special permit and the bylaw that the planning board all. Has jurisdiction over. Um, this is one of the rare properties around now that doesn't have any conservation jurisdictions or buffer zones or anything, so.
Oh, we're amazed at that without the cemetery right next to it. Nothing? That doesn't bother anything?
No. No.
Well, this um, it just looks really tight. I've, I've seen that property. It just looks really tight. It's kind of like busy, busy.
It's, it's definitely maximized.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Okay.
Does anyone else have any questions? Okay, well, if there's no other questions, um, I will hear a motion to close the special hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the special hearing on two twenty-six Main Street.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Alright. So now we have um. In front of us to approve the site plan, which would be. As we have in front of us tonight um with. Conditions that we will send over to you, what, but what will include. Adding in that vegetation, the plantings that we just spoke about um, a little bit earlier. Are there any other um thoughts on the conditions? That uh anyone on the board has?
Uh, I mean, we did, we did talk about whether or not the fire department had seen this updated. Presentation and uh communications went unanswered. So I, I don't know what we do there.
It was actually sent to the state financial too, correct? Um, Jude?
That's correct. When I talked to them, they had a couple of basic requirements that they just, they were having heartburn with the dumpster and not having access. On that side and they didn't wanna have to come in and take an immediate right hand turn into the site and try and maneuver through the buildings. So I'm.
No, I mean relocating that seems like it made sense and the.
Yeah.
You know, the, the truck looks like it has plenty of room. It has that um, that hundred and fifty foot. You know, bubble that it can, that it can get to. My question was mainly just for the rest of the board. Do we just say, hey, look, fire department, you guys had your chance to weigh in on this and didn't?
We, we sent it over.
I can't believe that the applicants aren't, aren't gonna work with them. Um. They're gonna have to go through the billing permit process. Um, you know, they've done their, in my opinion, they've done their due diligence. Um, they, they've shown us the, the buffer on that, um, getting the truck off the road. You know, I don't see uh an issue.
Okay.
One comment I'd like to make, Justin, on that issue is um, watching a planning board previously. These guys were trying to require that it goes before, to, to, uh, to correct departments review it. We went and did that and I'm a little disappointed that they didn't get back to you with any of it. We reached out to them and made sure it was all set. And basically, if we didn't say anything, you, we would have got it passed without a hitch. So we went above and beyond and made sure that we did get what we needed to get done.
Oh, no, I, I agree. I think it, I think it looks good and, you know, we're, you know, trying to build better interdepartmental.
Right. No, I'm, I'm not picking on any comments, but I just feel like they should have sent something to the planning board. I shouldn't have got it from. Another avenue, avenue.
Agreed.
Right. Well, if there's no other questions and no other discussion. Um, I'll hear a motion um to accept the site plan. For two twenty-six Main Street.
Make the motion.
I'll second it.
Alright, motion by Chris, seconded by Justin. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Alright, and a motion um for the special permit.
Make a motion, we accept the special permit for uh two twenty-six Main Street.
Second up.
Second, it made by Brian, seconded by Chris. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright, well, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
We are, I, I'd be super honest with you. We're between um planners right now, so I'm gonna do my best to get. Um, the paperwork over to you this week and I will reach out and, and I'll get your contact information from Gabe.
Thank you very much.
Alright, thank you. Alright, anything else? Um, any of the board members want to discuss this evening?
Nope.
Fantastic. I'll hear a motion to close the meeting.
Uh, next meeting is what, the twenty-second?
Twenty-second, right?
Twenty-second, six thirty.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You guys have a fantastic evening.
You too.
Hey, bye, everyone.